Yeah, many times of the day.
What I hear.
Yeah. I would suggest that to move forward on a bike lane concept that it would be nice for Atherton to take the lead in bringing together the stakeholders who, you know, will use this corridor. You know, Atherton, Menlo Park, the county, Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, and of course, Alta Planning is working on your bicycle pedestrian plan now, so they also have groups. But it would, yeah, I think it would be very useful to get a group together to develop sort of a consensus on what the most desirable possible bicycle pedestrian facility would be, you know, if it can be done.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Impressive resume. Good experience there. Any other member of the public want to speak on this issue? Don't be shy. I want to hear from you. Okay.
Valerie Gardner, ATM McCormick Lane. You know, I recognize, based upon the study session that you had last month, that there are constraints and there's an urgency in repairing the channel. But having to talk to the staff fairly recently, I've learned that there's now not just a couple study sessions, like our, sorry, master planning study groups, our bike pedestrian one plus a civic center one, there's also a park master planning group that I think has formed, and there's also a drainage channel master planning group. So when we talked about the channel and how we really urgently need to repair this existing channel, but it's not addressing the actual environmental needs that we have, first of all, it's not repairing or restoring any of the impacts of that channel to our riparian environment, we talked about taking those actions and doing it in a separate project along Watkins Avenue for improvements to both the park property and the aesthetic of the park, but also the drainage channel there, where we can actually add swells for water absorption, native creek to increase habitats for not only dusty rats and frogs, but salamanders and dragonflies and whatever else we need to have it for a healthy biosystem. And we can eliminate a lot of the risk of the flooding, which is something that we still need to do even along Marsh where there is flooding. So by changing our concerns about the Marsh Road and focusing all those on a better project along Watkins, I think we can do a much better job, both for the environment and for our water issues, and really see areas that are designed to encourage absorption of water that will be very good for the recharging of the aquifer, because we are a community with many wells and many people using groundwater for things. And we are currently worsening our problems by dumping all of that rainwater into the bay, and we need to do better about that for our environment. So I encourage you to accept that, but direct the staff to move ahead with what they need to do to get those master planning groups to talk to each other about this project. Thank you.
I just want to add something. We were at an ABEN meeting last week, and there are funds, if we create a PCA, a preferred --
Priority Conservation Area.
To, if we wanted to restore some riparian parts of our channel, they can help us pay for that. It's a lot of work, as I understand, to do something like that, and we've never had a priority conservation area or a priority development area, because we're not into heavy development, you know, like with multifamily or anything. But there is money out there that could help us pay for our bike and pet path, as well as working on our channel. And we do have this channel that runs through our town, and to the extent that we can look at it in a bigger, broader way, I think it will serve us well in the future. The city of Napa experienced flooding because they had this giant oxbow running through their downtown. They cut that off and transformed their downtown. I mean, it can be done if you have the political courage to do it and the will and the people and the vision. So thank you for that, Valerie. Any other public comments about this? If not, I'll bring it back to the council and let's take a, one more discussion about the, which direction we're going to go with either type 2A or type 4A, which is the boxed, conclosed culvert or the open culvert, which would be without the EIR. Personally, I'd like to make the motion that we move forward with the cast-in-place concrete U-channel with a future boardwalk structure for bike pit, and that is the type 2A without the EIR, and move forward with that as quickly as possible. So that's my motion.
Are we having a word? Okay.
Discussion.
Yeah. My, my.
There's a motion on the table. It's either going to be seconded or...
You're going to have a second?
Second. I was thinking of discussion a little bit.
Okay.
We went forward with the motion.
Okay. Well, then I'll retract my motion.
Thank you.
I'm going to move this on.
Okay.
More discussion.
Yeah. When we had the, when we had the study session, I was actually quite excited about the cast-in-place solution with the boardwalk. Of course, I didn't think that the boardwalk would cost somewhere between one and a half and two and a half million dollars. And at that time, it was like $750,000 extra for the, for the box culvert. Given where we are today, to me, it looks like it's, it's probably a better solution to go with the back of the box culvert. I realize that there's going to be a waiting period for an EIR, but at the same time, it does leave open the opportunity, when you, when you put that box culvert in, there's going to be a flat surface that we can either plant around and make it look like a nice gateway and/or put, it's either going to be cement down the top, or we could put some other type of covering if we wanted to, that people could traverse with regards to bicycles, you can't put gravel on it, but, but something like that. So to me, at this point in time, seems that the best, the best solution now is the box culvert from a, from a cost standpoint and, and for, you know, giving us the, the future, you know, giving us something for, for pedestrian and a bike path quicker.
Okay. Okay. Council Vice Mayor, please. Who's next? Vice Mayor.
Go ahead.
It's, going through them both, you know, I, I have some concerns on some of the things that we discussed last time, and I think George mentioned it, is access to the culvert area. So by the complete box culvert, I'm feeling a little uncomfortable with creating, in essence, an enclosed channel with minimal access, if any access, to all points of that channel area. So that, that is a concern to me. I'm kind of sitting here looking a little bit more on the option 2A and saying that by the design aspect, which, and I'm also concerned that we have failure in that area, and maybe we'll sit on this for the next 10 years talking about it, that concerns me. So by having phase one being, getting the culvert section, the U-channel section done, and parallel, hopefully, and studying and analysis on potential environmental impacts, and also really considering what the aesthetics is and safety of what we put on top of that, because that is like the gateway into this town, and that factor could take us a while to decide on what it's going to look like and the safety factors of it and so on and so forth. So by having this in a two-phase, in essence, a two-phase, I'm more comfortable with moving forward with channel phase, the U, the U-culvert, and then moving forward with this EIR study, and then addressing how we want that top section to look, because I think it's going to take us a while, frankly.
Okay. Councilmember Dobbie.
Well, I believe that the box culvert provides a complete solution that would allow us, once we get this done, we can put whatever covering we want over there and give us whatever kind of path we want, or I don't know what we necessarily want to do with it, because as the mayor said, you know, having a bike path that goes into the Menlo Park Marsh Road doesn't make any sense whatsoever. I think if we do the box culvert and get it done, at least we've got a complete solution that would allow us to put a path there. And I, as I said previously, I would hope that we can also put in lots of shrubbery that will cover up all these ugly fences. So I, I have to say that for us to vote for a solution that could cost us potentially another half a million dollars, other than the box culvert, I just can't see it. So I have to say that my recommendation would be to go with the box culvert.
So I have a question. The estimate that you've given us for the box culvert, does that include the cost of the EIR?
No, that is construction.
Okay.
On either one, right? Either one will have a cost on EIR.
Ultimately, 2A doesn't have any cost initially, but when you cover it.
2A has no... Right, right, right. So...
Same, same cost.
No, it's more cost. The, it's, it's my understanding that the box culvert, the construction cost is 2.8 million.
Plus 400,000.
And then plus 400,000. That's 3.2 million 60,000, you know, round that up. And the, 2A would be a cast-in-place alternative of 2 million 384,000. And that's, to me, and that, that solves our problem, whether we put a boardwalk on it or not. So the low-cost approach initially would be 2A2, actually. Cast-in-place, concrete walls, inverted, a construction cost of 2.384 million, excluding a safety railing. They, they both exclude safety railings, so, you know. And I think that that provides your complete solution also, whether or not you ultimately cover it with a bike pit path. And with the box culvert, it's not a finished path on top. You would have to put something on top of it. You look at the design, they've got the box culvert, and then there's a tie-down with the dashed lines, which is to be put in the possible pathway at a later date. And so the, I have to disagree with Councilmember Dobbie's math in that option 4A is essentially less expensive.
But you could walk on it now.
You could walk in it, absolutely. But if I could...
I don't know about that.
Oh, absolutely.
Could I, could I ask a question? If we were to, if we were to do the environmental study for a 4A and quote-unquote a covered 2A, would the, do we need to have the design finalized to start that, that EIR?
No.
So would it be prudent, since we probably would like to cover it, and, and we may want to not close off our options, would, could we do the, start with the EIR and essentially push the, the final decision on what the design would be downstream a little bit? And it would also allow us perhaps some more time to see if we could get some additional funding from other jurisdictions like we talked about as well. So it gets us started on the process. I realize it doesn't fix the, the problem, which, you know, but we would have to continue to fund the maintenance, which, you know, you mentioned, 20,000 to 30,000. And it allows us also to not just, I mean, we don't exactly have $3 million sitting around. You know, we've got lots of demands on our money. So it would also allow us to do a little more banking of, of this. And in our five-year plan, we always planned on this being a five-year type of project, so.
Well, I, I think that the fiscal impact, it does talk about that we have $210,000 right now in a disclosure 13, 14 budget to begin, and the project is included in the five-year capital improvement program for four sources of funds for a total of 2.7 million. So we do have it essentially financed over the five-year plan.
Well, pushing it downstream a little bit and doing the EIR would also allow us to finish some of these other plans that Valerie has spoken about, and for us to sync everything together, so it doesn't preclude us. I mean, we, we are talking about a bike master plan, and we are talking about Marsh Road being a way we want to go down the road, down there. Obviously, that would give us also some time to work with the other jurisdictions with regards to making sure that we, we wouldn't spend our money foolishly and, you know, and have a, a bike path that goes down over the covered channel, whether it's a, a boardwalk or it's a cement bottom that ends at, at having to take a right on Bay Front Road, you know, that doesn't go anywhere. So it, to me, you know, I, I think that we want to do something, but we don't want to have the money burn in a hole in our pocket. So it might be worthwhile to start the, the environmental program study. It will allow us to finish the park master plan and see what we want to do, perhaps explore your gateway, you know, concept, your concept with, with the boardwalk, and, because eventually we'll have to do that anyway. And so it might be worthwhile to do it that way.
So I, I think what we should do is direct staff to get with the city planner to more fully understand if that process would work. It seems like the horse, cart before the horse, kind of a situation, to go with a EIR for a potential cover situation rather without making the decision of what design we're going to actually build. So I think I'd like to continue this.
I suspect the, the environmental work for option 2A1 and the box culvert would be identical.
Right.
Because they're both fully concrete-covered enclosed channels.
So the $400,000...
It may, it may be that depending on how a boardwalk would be added to 2A1, it could be added in a way that has openings on the side for critters, things like, the box culvert takes all that out, so...
That's 2A2.
Oh.
Right, 2A2.
2A1 and 4A are the same.
But we could have different options, too.
So the EIR.
So what, what might be missing tonight, that would be a prudent discussion, would be to address the planners and have them look at what would be involved in initial study with respect to, especially the flora and fauna, that, I mean, that's really the only difference between what's there today and covering it, because plants can't grow without sunlight and all those kinds of things. And if you have a very close boards without much of a gap, you're not going to end up with a whole lot of plant life in there. So it might be worthwhile, I hate to suggest it slightly continuous, maybe worthwhile to look at the environment, just a preliminary environmental review, to see what, if there are any differences in the, in the different plants.
Well, I, I can almost guarantee you, and this is City Attorney, I thought you said there are differences in the environmental work between open channel, with an open boardwalk to some degree, and overflow ability of the channel, and a fully enclosed channel.
Sure, right.
Environmental work is totally different. It's going to be easier, faster, and cheaper if it were open to some degree.
So, you know, while I understand, and kind of, I, I understand your direction here, I don't think it's apples and apples for the environmental review for what it is that you're, you know, we're, we're going to be requesting, because one is a completely enclosed box, you know, that completely blocks out any potential of life. And the other is a raised, overflowing, spaced, you know, with air and stream and little critters and everything, being able to access it. So I think that you've got two different kinds of environmental study.
Well, potentially, we haven't, we haven't designed what the, what the boardwalk would be, so worst case, it would cover it, so, you know.
But what you're recommending is to go through an environmental study for two different options. And why would you do that?
But if we cover, if we cover the open channel, it seems to me that we have to go through the environmental part.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So it's going to be covered one way or the other.
And, and the cost is probably going to be the same as, or it may be the same as if you go with an enclosed.
And it allows the rest of our plans to move, to, to catch up.
2A1 and 4A will have the same magnitude of the cost, most likely.
So the $400,000 applies to both.
No, but 2A2...
Would be different.
Would be different.
Yes.
Right. Might I just interject a little bit?
Yes.
I thought that when we discussed this last time, one of our real concerns was we wanted the ability to have whatever was in there percolate through and whatever was up here, percolate down.
Yes.
And then we also wanted to make sure that we had access points through this channel area to get in for maintenance and so on and so forth, separate than what is in the bike path area, right? So we wanted to be able to give logs, whatever got in the way, we wanted access. I don't think we'll achieve that by the concrete culvert.
Well, it's a concrete culvert getting to it, and it's a concrete culvert leaving it. So you've got 300 feet of non-concrete culvert, so, and that, and they seem to be able to manage the concrete culvert all throughout Menlo Park and all throughout, down Middlefield Road and down Marsh Road, all through a concrete culvert. And the only place it's open for us is on Watkins and, and on, and on Marsh Road, our portion of Marsh Road. The rest of it's all covered up, including at the beginning of Watkins Road. We already have concrete culverts.
I mean, there's a lot of open channel, you know, throughout Calhoun.
But we're really...
Talking about this part, I'm talking about this part.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you, you made that generalization, and I just want to make sure that...
But I think we had, I apologize.
That's not accurate.
But I think we had some concerns in our connection point to, in essence, the county territory. So once the, the culvert's done and it goes into, we had some concerns that if there was overflow, and I think we even had a few residences, but that, that does get some overflow in high weather. If it has no way to get out at that ending point, then we've, we're going to have potential backup this way.
It's going to have overflow, well, I think that they said there would be overflow on the, on either of the, either of the plans. They would have to have some overflow down at the, at the Bay Road connection.
Okay.
And that we would still potentially have some flooding down there, is what I heard the gentleman say.
We could have the planning staff provide a cursory overview of what the environmental would look like.
Right.
With the City Attorney's suggestion for that, and come back, but...
We're going to continue this.
Yeah.
We're going to continue to, to December 18.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Well, we have a, we have a study input back, or are we just continuing?
Well, no, we just directed staff to do some more investigation.
Yeah, to do some work.
Well, the planning staff come back with a cursory overview of what the environmental might look like.
If they would differ.
Yeah.
If they potentially did.
All right. So, all right, moving on. Number 17.
I think 16 would need to continue it.
That's what I said. Motion to continue? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed. Okay, item number 17. Discuss and provide direction to street row is right of way and park enhanced maintenance. Okay? You know that there's jargon and shortcuts, so, City Manager, do you want to present this? This is quite, Steve?
Do we have Steve and Mike attached, and you are down there, who are happy to present this?
Sure, I'd be happy to give them an overview. At your September meeting, staff presented suggestions and solicited council feedback regarding enhanced maintenance activities within the public roadway and also at Holborn Palmer Park. Based on that discussion, City Council requested staff report back on some specific enhancements and their associated costs. And based on that direction, Steve Tyler worked with MCE, the town's contract maintenance provider, to determine additional resources and costs associated with the itemized list enhancements that we've outlined in your staff report. For the most part, most of the maintenance tasks identified in the report are currently part of the city's existing maintenance activities. However, the current maintenance, current maintenance levels are driven by current budget availability. Staff believes that the current levels of maintenance are meeting basic and our core needs, but we also believe that meaningful and valuable improvements within the public roadway and at Holborn Palmer Park would result from increasing the current maintenance investment. To assist the council in your discussion of potentially increasing maintenance activities, staff separated each task into categories of things that in our minds would improve safety, things, also things that would improve the overall aesthetics of both the street roadway as well as the park. Tasks which would, which we believe would also improve the customer experience, either because the trash and garbage would be collected on a more regular basis on the weekends at the parks, or because we would have a more proactive review of streetlights, and if they're working, rather than relying on calls from residents, because they're not. And then also, some of the, some of the improvements that are on the list will improve the town's ability to manage assets. The staff report also differentiates tasks which would be performed by MCE as opposed to tasks which would be competitively bid in accordance with the town's purchasing policy. In any case, the City Council has the ability to pick and choose whatever tasks or combination of tasks based upon what you feel are most important, and based on the level of desired maintenance enhancements that you desire. As far as next steps, based on direction we received from you this evening, staff will prepare the necessary contract and budget amendments with MCE, along with preparing any necessary documents for those tasks which need to be competitively bid. And we will return to City Council for, for necessary actions on the contract and budget amendments. So with that, that concludes staff presentation, and myself and Steve will be happy to try to answer your questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So does council have any, you know, just specific questions right now, clarifying what we're doing here? Otherwise, I'd like to hear from our residents about, you know, if there's any public comment on how we're doing and what this entails. I see we have some people here. Are there any people wanting to talk about this item? Okay. Bring it back. Yes? Okay, good. All right?
Al?
Yes.
I'm concerned about Holborn Palmer Park, and it's a great asset. We're fortunate to have it. It's wonderful to have it. But the level of tending, replacing the plants and trees that are, trees that are stressed, we've had a lot of shrubs die recently, and they're doing a good job on the amount of resource they have, but I would like to see that park become really something, really something to see. And if you take a walk through the various areas, you would find many areas that are just not being taken care of in the way they should, trees, shrubs, and flowers. I think the budget for replacement is something like $2,000 a year, okay? I couldn't keep my yard at $2,000 a year looking good. So I really encourage the council to take a look at the details in that park and take a look at what isn't getting done because of resources and what isn't getting replaced and what isn't being taken care of, especially trees that have been there for years, and some of them are just in, in trouble, and they're in real trouble. And so I'd like to see that park move to a new level of flora and fauna and just be really proud of what's, what it looks like. And I think this is an opportunity to put more resources, a little bit more money in there, and the people that are tending it with some more resources will do. tending it with some more resources will do an excellent job for you.
Any other public comments?
Denise Cooperman, seventy-four Atherton Avenue. I really am pleased to learn that maybe more resources are going to go, um, be invested in the park, it's been underinvested for a long time, and now we're limited resources, and it's a combination of a number of things, it's lack of money, and it's also, um, at this point, um, the, the people that are actually doing the work in the park, unfortunately, we're in a situation where there are contracted employees that have little to no experience, they're making a very nominal wage of about fifteen dollars an hour, so it's a little bit difficult to understand that the town would have the expectation that we would have a wonderfully maintained park if all that we're able to afford is that type of staffing. So my hope is that with the additional monies, um, the public works department can address the skill level and, um, the, uh, people that are able to maintain the park. I just have a question on the semantics, they say that they would maybe hire a master gardener, when I look at the number of hours and the amount of dollars, it works out to about a hundred and fifty-six dollars an hour, so, um, you might want to take a, a little look at that, and then secondly, uh, the definition of a master gardener is a volunteer, uh, every county, just about every county in the country has a master gardener, or volunteers, and where our mission is to educate the community on sustainable landscape practices, based on the latest, uh, university research in California, it comes the research out of UC Berkeley. There are master gardeners who are also professional gardeners, and they might give a resource, and the other thing to really consider is whether or not the person has the experience to maintain a large landscape, which is what this is, and there are many individuals that have, uh, specific training in that, but I hope that you could go forward, but maybe give the public works department some leeway in terms of, not specifically as it's defined, but maybe the dollars, thank you.
Any comments?
I agree with what Bob said, I, I, I think the park is just an outstanding resource, uh, that during these last ten or fifteen years, when the town has been extremely economically challenged, we haven't invested in it to the degree that we should, in my opinion, and, um, I, I, I noticed the same thing that Denise spoke to, I mean, a hundred and fifty-six dollars an hour doesn't make any sense for, uh, an extremely qualified gardener, notwithstanding the title here, uh, but I know that our prior arborist is available for forty dollars an hour, she's not, uh, she's, she's focused on trees, but she's really good, and, um, I think that the council should consider, uh, bringing in somebody who has particular expertise in the tree assets that are in that park, and separately, somebody who is particularly skilled in managing the type of gardens and, uh, plant materials that we have there, and that could be envisioned, I know there's a master plan going on there, and I think that this should be coordinated with that, uh, to really invest in the resource, because it's an amazing resource.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Madam. Just one type of graphical correction, the ninety-one thousand dollars should actually be fifty-nine thousand dollars, of the total of the bold numbers. Fifty-nine thousand and ninety-one thousand.
So it's, it's the, it's just the bold numbers?
Yes.
Okay, because I was trying to add.
Everything, everything might be, you know, another.
The non-bold, the non-bolded items will require, if the numbers listed on there, some of them will, will require bidding, RFPs, that sort of thing, and so, the numbers would just, they're just really for, for estimates for, for your budgeting purposes.
And service levels and hours and all that would be part of the bidding process.
So I just wanted to ask Denise a quick question, so, you think that the hundred and fifty dollars an hour for a master gardener is low?
No.
High?
It's, it's high, it's also the question of master gardener, although, looking at the total dollar amount.
Doesn't seem.
That, that seems very reasonable, and it, it, it could be that it was just in, in translating, um, the, the plans that they have and the type of staff that they might need to do the additional work would be, um, it's maybe more complicated than that, and, but, so, my last comment was that, rather than looking at sort of the details that they have defined in your presentation, that you approve the dollars and, um, give the public works, um, department the opportunity to put it out to bed and work out a, uh, work plan and, uh, job descriptions that would, um, meet, uh, what their vision is, rather than focus on that particular detail.
Okay, all right, all right, bring them back to council, um, who wants to take a stand at this?
Sure.
Mr. Wainner first, please.
So, um, first off, with regards to the park, uh, I'm a hundred percent in favor of putting more money into the park, and also making sure that we have a presence there seven days a week, as we mentioned when we talked about it last time, uh, there is the issue where people come and have a party or whatever, uh, at the, at the picnic areas, and, you know, after one day, there's lots of trash, it's overflowing, et cetera, and it makes it unattractive, and it's, it's actually an unhealthy situation. But also having the presence there increases the safety and the awareness of what's going on there, so having an extra body, uh, you know, seven days a week in the park, uh, I think is, is a key thing. We, you know, I put it out in, in one of my staff reports, one of my few staff reports, um, that, uh, you know, the garden areas really need, uh, work, okay? Even when we're having, uh, like the art show there the other day, a couple months ago, um, you know, the garden needed weeding, there were all sorts of dead, dead roses that were out there, the roses needed trimming, and it needed to be spruced up, so, so I agree with, with the, the investment, um, even though it wasn't, uh, uh, bolded, I, I would like to see us have some sort of professional gardener who has the big, uh, landscape experience to be able to go through and give us a laundry list of things to do, and then we can pick those off. Um, there are, there are key things, as the city manager, uh, and I spoke about the other day, I guess they're looking for some things that maybe we do want and we don't.